Test.
Test, test. There you go. Okay. All right. Very good. Let's begin the Raytown Board of Alderman meeting. This is April 14th, 2015, regular session number forty-nine. The Royals are the most feared team in Major League Baseball in first place in our division. So we start tonight the way we finished last year with them. So this time I'm going to call upon Alderman Van Busker to lead us in the invocation, please.
Father, thank you, Lord, for the opportunity we have to come together freely in this great land, Lord, to just be able to serve together. We ask that you give us wisdom in the decisions we make. Lord, I just pray that...I ask for humbleness. And, Father, I pray for this community, that you'll bless it, that your hand will be upon us. Pray for our police officers and our EMS personnel and our firemen, and, Lord, that serve us each day and protect us, and, Lord, and take care of our emergency needs. And, Father, I just pray for all of these, the employees of our city, that your hand be upon them. Lord, help us as a nation, don't honor you, and we know that if we don't, Father, this nation will not be honored. It's in his name and through the power of his shed blood that I ask these things. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
Here.
Alderman Melson?
Here.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Jason Green?
Excuse me.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Josh Green?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to ask that James Bradford join me at the podium, please. James Bradford represents today the people working in our 911 call center downstairs. When many of us in our community need the help and we hit those three very important buttons, Mr. Bradford is one that then answers those calls with his staff and other police department members that work with Jim down there, answer the call and then dispatch those that help all of our citizens in our community in a time of need. And it's always without asking, always without double-checking, but always responding. And that service is very much appreciated by the citizens, by the board of this city as well, for all that you do and the officers that you work with. I thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Bradford. This time, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Raytown Emergency 911 Communication Officers play a critical role in the health and safety of persons within Raytown, whereas the Communication Center processes nearly forty-two thousand requests for service each year, ninety-two thousand five hundred telephone calls and twenty thousand two hundred and fifty 911 calls, whereas these highly dedicated staff members serve the citizens of Raytown twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Citizens of Raytown receive superior service through the Raytown 911 Emergency Communications Center, providing information, call processing, and immediate dispatch of emergency calls to the Raytown Emergency Medical Services and the Raytown Police Department. I, David Bauer, Mayor of the great city of Raytown, hereby recognize the week of April 12th, 2015, and sign this proclamation in honor of National Communicator Week, and ask the citizens of Raytown to recognize the effort, work, and dedication of the Raytown Emergency 911 Communication Officers, signed this fourteenth day of April, and on behalf of the Board of Alderman. Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Alderman. I would like to recognize the staff that works in the Communication Center. Lindsey Schwartz, Laura Shireman, and Brona Dergan are three of the five that are working there now. There's two I would like to point out that have been there numerous years. Kim Mawhinney has her thirtieth anniversary coming up in May, and Joy Wisner has been there thirty-five years this past March. When the average time for a dispatcher is four to six years, those two have been dedicated servants to the citizens of Raytown for triple that time. I would like to thank them personally. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor to public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to address this board on items that are within our control, this is the time to do so. Okay, none appearing. We'll continue with the agenda. This past couple of weeks have been a big time for the city of Raytown. We had announced that the extravaganza was coming, the egg extravaganza on the green space. We were delighted by the turnout. Main Street Association put on a great program with that, with the help of many other agencies and groups within the city of Raytown. It was a big event, probably the largest parade we've seen in a number of years. I enjoyed, as I always do, reading to the kids at the library, and I will look forward to doing that in the future as well, because that's where our future lies, is with the children in this community. That was a very big day, though, and it was great to see the green space, full of kids and families enjoying the sunshine and working together as a community. Also, we had the opportunity this past week to have our general election. We elected a new mayor. We voted on the charter, and we also elected new Aldermen that'll sit on this board, and we'll announce them coming in next week. So next week, the 21st, will be a meeting in which we will welcome all the new electors, and they will take their chairs and begin their government, at which time then we turn a page in this city. And I'll speak more at that time, but we turn a page that brings a lot of delight to a lot of people, a lot of positive attitude, a lot of thinking. And this city will continue to grow and to prosper and to continue to be a leader in the metropolitan area. And I would take this time, and I'll do it again next week, but to thank this board for all of your proactive, all of your positive thinking, the leadership that we've received from staff brought to us, the leadership you provided through your wards. I thank you for all your work on that, and we will continue to...the city will continue to thrive and prosper and do well as we turn the page and a new administration takes over. So Mahesh, anything from the city administrator?
Good evening, Mayor Bauer, Board of Alderman. This is a second letter that we received in the last couple of years, but I thought it's worth reading it. It's a gentleman who was a former resident of Raytown, moved, wrote a letter to Mayor Bauer. "My family moved to Raytown in 1963 when I was nine-year-old. We lived there until 1967, when we moved to Independence. During that time, we often played at night under the streetlights on the corner of our yard. One night, as my friends and we were playing under the light, we challenged each other to see who could throw a rock and put out the streetlight. Whether by luck or skill, it doesn't matter, I threw the rock that broke the light. A minor offense, perhaps, but one that I'm sorry for committing. I'm sorry for the expense incurred and the unnecessary time and energy required to replace the broken light bulb. Please accept my apology."
And with that, came a check.
Yeah, with that, he also enclosed a check. And this was, like I said, this was a second in series, not by the same person, but...so sometimes people do realize the property damage they have done for the city, the taxpayers' dollars. And later on in their life, they realize to pay it back, and that was a good gesture, and I just thought it's worthy to mention it and recognize that. Not that I encourage anybody to do the property damage, but if you have done that, there is a way to pay it back. On a community announcement, May 27th, Raytown EMS will be hosting a community blood center, blood drive in conjunction with EMS Week. The drive will be held at Raytown EMS, 10020 East 66th Terrace, Raytown. More information will be coming up in the future. Also, Mayor and Board of Alderman, I would like to inform you about kudos received for Public Works. Thank you very much, City of Raytown, for repaving 84th Street and plugging up the huge hole that has at the corner of Lane and 84th Street. I really appreciate it. Have a great weekend. That was one of our residents who lives near that location. Also, a lot of our staff is involved in community engagement, probably more than we ever realize. But what I will do from time to time, let you know who are some of the staff members who are involved. So there was a Qantas one day on April 11th, 2015. Two of the staff members who are here, John Benson and Brenda, served as the Shepherd Center volunteers. Brenda and John also on the Shepherd Center Board of Directors. Two other individuals, Brenda and Kim La Sage, sold papers on April 6th for Rotary Club that helped or will help underprivileged children to go to youth camp. And that's one thing that Raytown Rotary Club does. Half of the proceeding also goes to Raytown Emergency Assistance Program, REEP. Mayor and Board, I also like to inform you that we have received information from Kansas City Water Services Department regarding their new rates that will be in effect from May 1st, 2015. So obviously, the rates are going in a positive direction, which means they have increased their rate by seven percent, which, if it is calculated for the entire year, would be about $70,000. But because our fiscal year is different from their fiscal year, the impact would be for us only half of the year, equaling to about $35,000. Even with this new rate and total billing for the year, we should fall within our budget, because our budget generally is a little conservative, because we don't want to estimate short and then keep asking you for more money. So that was the cushion, and we will be able to absorb that. But what it means going forward for our next year budget, we may have to make some adjustments.
And that's Kansas City rating?
That's Kansas City sewer rate. And just for information, about one-third of our Senator's sewer goes to Kansas City, and two-thirds goes to Little Blue Valley Sewer District. Also, on your agenda, you have item number three, that is an emergency repair. If you recall, I authorized that repair. It was necessary. The work is underway or almost completed, but you will be...since the amount was over $15,000, it's coming to you for an approval, so that we can officially approve that and take care of that business. I think with that, I will conclude my report for tonight.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll go to committee reports. I'll start on my left, Mr. Lightfoot.
There's no legislative committee report today.
Mr. Mock.
I'd like to follow up on the egg extravaganza that was held last week and thank Pam Clark and Phyllis Goforth for all the work they do. They are our leaders on this egg extravaganza. One other thing, I'd like to welcome Sam and Phyllis Goforth to Raytown. They just moved into their new home just a few months ago. And if it wasn't for the children of Raytown, this egg extravaganza would not go on today. So there's plenty of kids there at the Easter egg hunt itself. Lot of different things going on, face painting. They had a player for the children this year that was new. And the parade, and it's a successful parade that it will be getting bigger by the years going on. And we will have, and we are having that parade back here in Raytown again. So thanks again to everybody that helped out. Thank you.
Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I unfortunately didn't write the young man's name down, but we have a young man that joined us tonight who's here from Rockhurst, who is here as part of his studies and requirement for them. He's joined us this evening and assigned some paperwork for him earlier. We're glad you're here with us. The Sales Tax Oversight Committee will be meeting next Tuesday at 5:30 before the Board of Alderman meeting. So if anyone is interested in participating in that, it certainly would be welcome.
Mr. Ertz.
The Chamber of Commerce, which is open to everybody, will have a Government Relations Committee, eight o'clock on Friday morning at the Chamber offices.
Ms. Emerson.
The Human Relations Committee will meet this Thursday in the conference room at 6:00 PM. I also would like to thank the Public Works for taking care of Sterling Avenue that had the big dips in it for months and months, and they got that rectified, and I appreciate that immensely.
Ms. Melson.
I don't have a committee report, but I would like to say that I've been honored to serve on numerous committees with the city over the last sixteen years, and do appreciate the opportunity to have served the residents in numerous capacities.
Mr. Azier. Mr. Kramer.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Josh Green.
I just wanted to reiterate off of Alderman Ertz's statement concerning government relations with the Chamber, anybody is welcome to come, whether you're a resident or a business owner or serving government in some form, anybody's welcome to come. It's a great way to find out what's going on in the community. Yeah, this Friday.
Very good. With that, we'll move to the legislative session. We've got just the two items on the consent agenda, that being the minutes from March 17th, 2015, and another resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Kramer's got the motion to approve, second by Ms. Melson. Any comments before we vote or discussion on that? Now I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on item number one, the consent agenda, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green? Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
I want to thank Quentin Brown for joining our Human Relations Commission. With this vote just taken, his appointment has been finalized, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for agreeing to join that commission. It's a very vital part to our community, and I appreciate his stepping up to do so. We'll move to the regular agenda this time and ask the clerk to perform the reading on item number two, please.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Landtel Communications Services, Inc., for the 2015 concrete repair project, and the amount not to exceed $150,000.
We have our city engineer, Jason Hanson, before us. Jason, anything you'd like to add, sir?
Nothing to add, just a few more details. We're doing about ten or twelve areas in town. Most of it is mimicking our lightweight aggregate seal program to bring the handicap ramps up to ADA compliance, as well as the curb and gutters and sidewalk trip hazards. We had seven companies turn in bids. It was very competitive. The low bid from Landtel was underneath our engineer's estimate, as well as underneath our budgeted amount. So we are very happy with the results, and we have worked with them in the past, and we do recommend them again.
Mr. Mock.
Yeah, we are looking to have this work completed by June, end of June.
Yeah, I plan to have this work done the month of May, the month of June, and possibly into July, but it's roughly a two-month project.
Good. Hope the rain holds off.
For a while. Mr. Ertz.
Echoing off of that, is there a time limit on this?
Yeah, this project was for, what was it? I believe sixty calendar days. It was for pretty much right at two months.
I understand that you could give them rain days to add to that, but we don't want to go through what happened.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, but...
With their request.
The asphalt from last year. Thank you.
Right.
Ms. Melson.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Melson's got the motion to approve.
I second it.
Second by Ms. Emerson. Discussion before we vote? Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanson, I am having a little bit of difficulty reading the maps that we have in the back here, specifically what areas we're talking about, which...we have two of them. Some of it probably is asphalt, some of it is overlay, some of it is the seal, some of it concrete, but I'm not sure what part is what on which map.
That map, the one with the 2013 paving, the overlay and chip seal, that was put in the packet by mistake. The other map that has the area circled with Area A, Area B, through Area H and I, that is where the concrete will be performed. The other map was a pass that I should not have put in the packet.
Okay. What's the significance of the colors in the different areas? There's blue, orange, some green areas, yellow, what?
The five bigger ones, the blue, the four blues and the red, that goes with our chip seal. And I mainly just did the different colors so the areas would be a little more noticeable and stand out. They don't really have any meaning. It was just to try and make it easier to see where the work was going to be performed.
Just to make the map look nice, right?
Yeah, just colorful and pretty.
Do we have a comprehensive plan going forward from 2015?
I believe our last pavement presentation was for three years, and I believe it was...I believe we did it for years 14, 15, and 16.
Okay.
But it may have been 13, 14, 15. I can't be for sure, but our pavement plan is on a three-year plan.
Okay, so you're not sure?
Yeah, that could be the map in the back.
Okay.
That is labeled 2013 through 15.
So going forward from 15...
That was presented to the board, like, May of 2012, as it says. Oh, the next three years. I didn't include it, but yeah, I believe this map is a little outdated.
Okay.
But I did not include the three-year plan into this concrete package.
So there's an additional three-year plan?
Yes.
I see our interim director shaking his head yes also.
Yes. I don't have it with me, but we do have one.
Very good. Could you get that before we leave? No, you don't have to do that.
I can go look.
Thank you, Tony. Tony, wow.
We always thank Tony anyway.
And I thank Tony, too. Thank you, Jason.
All right, we've got a motion made and seconded. Mr. Azier, anything you'd like to add, sir?
I just have a question, Jason. So I know that you have been working on this for quite a while. Do you, like, in the springtime, do you go back over the roads again, maybe to look to see what has degenerated over the wintertime?
Yes.
Like in cul-de-sacs? Are you doing that currently?
Most of this planning was done in the winter months, when there was no snow on the ground. We do the measurements, we do the estimating, then we put it out to bid, and then, when the contractor is ready to begin, we will go with him and mark each of the areas, and we'll get more of a fine-tuned and detailed, you know, exact amount of what they are to remove and replace. And so it will change. In the winter, it could be two panels of sidewalk in front of a house, and in the spring, it could be maybe three pieces of sidewalk. But yeah, everything is flexible, and we'll remarket with the contractor, so everyone's on the same page.
If we've been contacted about requests or concerns over streets that aren't on here, is that something we could speak with you about at a later time?
Yeah. Myself and Tony Mesa, we have an Excel spreadsheet that we keep complaints for concrete work, sidewalks, curbs, handicap ramps. We have another list, kind of like a waiting list.
Is that like an overlay?
It could be overlay, too, but this list is primarily for concrete.
It's just...okay. Anyway, I'll just get with you at a later time. We can visit about it.
Okay.
Maybe after the meeting today.
Yeah, we, as you know, we have concrete sidewalks all over the city and curbs that need to be repaired. What we try to do is, each year, the streets we pave, we have to bring those streets into handicap compliance per the federal standards. So primarily, our money goes toward those streets that will be getting paved. Then after we cycle through the streets to be paved, that will also cycle through all the neighborhoods in the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mock.
I want to ask this. Do we have, like, a percentage of the ADA ramps that have been completed in Raytown today?
I don't have a percentage, but I could add up...we've been doing these concrete projects the last five years, I believe, and I could easily add up, you know, one year it could be thirty, another year it could be, like this year, ten. But there's probably been a couple hundred, but I don't have the exact number.
I'd like to know what that would be, you know, how close we are to getting all those completed. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Hanson, I want to thank you and Mr. Melvin, and I believe Mahesh may have had a hand in this also, but there's been, you know, in amongst all some of the other silliness going on, you proactively came out with a report that talked about and provided facts about this type of system that we're now using, and the amount of overlay we're able to get on it, and how we're getting more streets done on an annual basis and costing the taxpayers less. It's working out very successfully. My wife and I were driving through Lee's Summit the other day, and I noticed that there were a number of streets with the same pavement pattern in Lee's Summit as well. So it seems to be, we're not the only wolves out there anymore, but other cities are catching on as well. So I appreciate the proactive fact sheet that... So, I appreciate the proactive fact sheet that was put out about the overlay system and what it is. And I appreciate your work on that. Any further discussion before we vote? Mr. Van Busker.
I just want to mention one thing. There's been a lot of misinformation that has been out related to our street overlay program and the lightweight aggregate seal and what it is and what we do with it. And I think it's been, you know, we've, we've been ahead of the game on this. There are many cities using it, just as the mayor said. I see it all around the area being utilized. I was just driving down Colburn Road a couple days ago, and they've got it there. And that's a, that's a road that, that has a major amount of traffic on it. Normally, we just utilize it on streets that are not made thoroughfares through our city, but they're using it in some other areas, I noticed. And I do appreciate the fact that we do have a comprehensive plan and have had that for several years, where we know in advance and we can plan what we're going to do with our money that we have available to do the street overlay program, to do the concrete work, and to do the other work that needs to be done. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the planning that's went into it. And I thank you all for doing a good job with that.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, we do have a motion in a second. Call the vote, please.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ask the clerk to perform the reading on item number 3, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving an agreement with Weidman, Inc. for an emergency repair project to the sanitary sewer main located in the vicinity of 8308 Hunter Street in an amount not to exceed $31,700.
Mr. Melvin or Mr. Hanson, anything you'd like to add to this before we take action?
This is a sewer repair that was an emergency and is basically complete at this time. But it's at 8308 Hunter. And we had a, about 25 feet of pipe that was just gone and a three-foot diameter hole following where the pipe had been that was discovered with our routine TV, routine sewer TV program. And when, when it was discovered, obviously, we had, if we have a 25-foot void, we've got to do something pretty quick. So, we did get that out and get a contractor on board. And most of that work, as Mahesh has mentioned, is, is completed and back in service. Basically, we just have the restoration to finish.
Mr. Mock, questions? Or action?
Yeah, how many feet, how many feet did they replace?
It was a total probably of about 35 feet, but it was three-point repairs.
Okay.
The biggest one was the 25-foot void.
Okay. All right, a motion to approve, please.
Mr. Mock's got the motion to approve. Mr. Kramer's got the second. We're in discussion. Mr. Ertz.
Was this, does this connect to the new sewer that was put in on 83rd?
No, it does not connect to the 83rd sewer within the, the three pieces that we worked on.
Okay.
One end of it, I believe, does. But it's, the, the pipe in this particular run is not in terribly bad shape except for the three spots, you know, that we, that we replaced.
Well, we, we replaced along 83rd, and I imagine there had to be some sort of an extension of this sewer pipe to connect to the new sewer.
It, it certainly does farther up, you know, farther down the hill.
Farther down, okay.
Yeah.
Well, this is 8308. It can't be too far up the hill.
Not a long way, no.
Yeah, okay. So, this...
It's, we didn't replace the last piece that went actually into the 83rd Street sewer.
So, it had nothing to do with the, the 83rd Street sewer line is running great. There's no problems with the, with the...
No issues with it.
$3 million put there. And everything looks good. And like you said, the restoration is still to be done?
Correct.
On this section up there. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer.
Pardon me, I'm having a bad allergy day here, but I just want to thank our Public Works Department over the last eight years that I've served on this board. The, the Public Works Department has just done a fantastic job of getting out through maintenance and, and research and finding what needed to be repaired. And, you know, a lot of times, these are the guys that nobody really sees unless they come down their street. But you guys just do a fantastic job. And I, I believe you said that just through your, your TV setup, you were able to locate that and get that repaired, correct?
That's correct. That was how we found this issue, was with, with the TV program. And I certainly will pass your, your thanks on to the crew members for, for the work that they've done.
Do a fantastic job. Thanks a lot.
All right, any further discussion? We've got a motion in a second on this matter. No further discussion. Call the vote, please.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
The motion passes. I ask the clerk to perform the reading on item number 4, please.
A resolution authorizing and approving a 16-month lease with Lineage for a Neopost automatic mail machine and a folder-in inserted machine off the Western States Contracting Alliance Cooperative contract.
It's always good to see our finance director, Mr. Lothrie. Anything you'd like to add, sir?
This is a, a project that actually started about a year and a half ago when we began looking at outsourcing the printing and mailing of our sewer bills. At that time, we determined that the equipment that we had was really oversized for going, going forward for the postage and folding. But we wanted to maintain it for a couple of reasons. One, it was early in the lease, and it would be too cost prohibitive to get out of the lease at that point. But number two, we wanted to make sure that the contractor that we were using was performing satisfactorily. And we determined that over the last year, they have done a great job. Very happy with that. And we feel like now's a good time to right-size the equipment. The current lease equipment is with Pitney Bowes. And we contacted them and tried to work with them to right-size the equipment, and they have no interest in downsizing. They basically want their money. So, we approached the Lineage, who is a Neopost representative in the area. And based on the estate, estate contract that they have, we were able to get some favorable pricing. I worked with them, and we'll be saving a substantial amount of money each year by right-sizing this equipment. We're looking forward to working with them.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Lothrie? Ms. Emerson?
What is costing us now to, 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 to the city?
It's, it's a piece work, so they, they bill us per piece. And when we, when we entered into the agreement just a little over a year ago, in fact, actually, May is the, the, the April billing will be a complete 12-month cycle with, with them. And I do not know the exact monthly amount because it varies month to month for the, what the billing costs.
I know that the city's going to pay, they're going to pay us $95,000 over the 60 months here. Now, we're going to refinance the rest of that money?
Actually, Lineage is going to pay out the remainder of the lease.
It's going to come up to like $51,000, $50,000 for the 60 months?
The lease with Lineage? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, it's $820, $850 a month for 60 months.
Well, how many pieces do you now hold? Since we don't have a source?
Right now, we do approximately 2,000 pieces of mail a month. And we still do, like, our late notices and turnoff notices, we still do those in-house. The, there are only two companies that provide this kind of machinery, this kind of equipment. There is another mailing company out there, but they specialize mainly in small office-type stuff. We did look into that, but they don't, the equipment is not really built for the, even the volume that we're looking at, even with the reduced volume. So, Lineage had the other state contract, so that's who we chose.
Mr. Ertz.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Ertz has got the motion approved, seconded by Mr. Kramer. We're into discussion. Mr. Van Busker.
I noticed in the agreement that not only are they paying, what was the, what was the first company? 50, yeah. Not only that, but after 60 months, we will own the equipment. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct as well. This, this is a lease-to-own program.
And it's a savings of $727 a month from what we're paying right now. Is that correct?
Yes, $727 a month, about approximately $8,700 a year.
Annual savings of $8,728 a year. Okay.